It is February 12th, 2025, seven, or actually 6:59. So, welcome everyone and happy Valentine's Day. We're gonna go ahead and start this meeting with a public hearing. Item A, I mean, I can go ahead and read it. Ordinance 2025-1 regarding proposed amendments to Chapter 240 related to the open space design.
Okay, you wanna hit your mic on?
Oh, you know what, here, let me take this one.
John, you just wanna open up with the process that's taken place to get us to this point?
Yeah, sure. Just to bring up the speed on what brought us to this point, you know, the board had expressed an interest in making some changes to the open space provisions. We did a draft ordinance that we shared with the planning commission. Well, first, we had a discussion at the board level here that further shaped the process, brought it to the planning commission. They recommended that it be approved. They were supportive of the effort. We advertised the ordinance, we advertised the hearing, and this evening's the date and time that we advertised for that hearing. So, if you want any details on the proposed changes, we can go to that, but we've taken all the steps to advertise and to follow the MPC in this.
At this point, we're giving the opportunity for the public to make any comments that they may have in regards to the modifications to this ordinance and the open space design. Does anyone from the public wish to address the hearing at this point? Hearing none. There's the possibility that the commissioners may decide to have another public hearing, or may not, and that they're able to do either. If they decide not to have another hearing, they would take some type of action within the next 90 days. So, we would do that prior to the expiration of a 90-day period from today. With that being said, we will close the hearing at this time.
We good?
All right, Beck.
We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Becky, can I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Andre.
Here.
Commissioner Pistovka.
Here.
Commissioner Lozini.
Here.
Commissioner Shray.
We all stand for the Pledge of Legions?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business this evening will be swearing in of new police officer Nathan Neal. Chief?
Good evening, Board. This is an exciting night, as it always is when we get a new officer for the department, but I just wanna say a few words. Nate's gonna talk a little bit afterwards before the swearing in, but this should be an exciting time for the township. We were fortunate, very fortunate, to be able to hire Nate Neal, who was top of his class at the academy. He's really a solid guy. He looks younger than my kids, so that's scary, but Nate's gonna be a great addition to the community. He's really, really excited to be here. That's so important. And he's young enough that we're gonna have him for a long time, so you'll get a lot out of him. So, at this point, we'd like to have the Honorable Maureen McGraw Desmond swear him in, and we'll do it. You wanna do it over here?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. After me. I, Nathan Neal.
I, Nathan Neal.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will enforce.
And that I will enforce.
The laws of this Commonwealth.
The laws of this Commonwealth.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of South Fayette.
Of South Fayette.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I do further swear.
I do further swear.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce.
And enforce.
The law.
The law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I do wanna add one other thing about Nate. It's not every day that, and this is the first time this has ever happened in my career, where the polygraph examiner, the psychologist, everybody that the testing that he had to go through, literally called me and said, "You have a very quality person coming to your department." And the guy that like does the polygraphs, he's done hundreds of them. I've never had anybody reach out to me and say, "What a quality person and candidate that you're getting for our department." So, that's encouraging, too. So, yeah, congratulations.
Thank you, Chief. First of all, I would just like to thank you guys for this opportunity. I'm extremely excited and honored. I feel very blessed. Everyone's been very welcoming and helpful. I'm extremely thankful. I'd like to thank my family for helping me get to this moment, and I look forward to a long career with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Well, now, go ahead and open up the meeting for public comment. This is for agenda items only, and I do want to remind everyone that this meeting is recorded for a later broadcast on our Township YouTube page. Is there any public comment? Very good. We'll go to item seven, correspondence. South Fayette Library Report. Ben? Okay, thank you. Anything on Oak Ridge Fire Department?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. Southbridge EMS, Dan?
All right.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. We did provide our monthly report, which also included the 2024 Annual Report for EMS in the Township. We wanted to highlight some statistics for you. We responded to 2,636 calls in South Fayette, which in 2024, which is up from the 2260 we did in 2023. So, that's a 17% increase from those two years. In January, we had 305 calls in South Fayette. That's a 47% increase just from January of 2023, or '24, sorry. So, the township's been very busy for us. Last year, we had 5,296 call, six calls service-wide, so that's a 9% increase from 2023. Some other fun facts you might need to know about the ambulance service, and that is our average ambulance bill for 2024 was just over $1,100, at $1,150. The average we collect, which is an astounding business model, we collect $473 of that $1,100. So, as you can see, supporting EMS is, in multiple aspects, is very important to make it function. That averages out to a 42% collection rate on an ambulance bill. South Fayette did increase their per capita contribution last year. However, they are still $1.92 behind per capita other districts that we serve in their contributions. In 2025, we have some cutting-edge technology coming. We have, we secured a $10,000 grant for videolaryngoscopes. That will enable us to put those on all our trucks. This is a tool for our paramedics to have a direct view of a patient's airway when it comes to complicated airway procedures. So, it's a nice tool that not everybody or their surrounding services have, so we're proud to say that we're gonna have that on all our trucks. Part of the grant will also purchase another automatic compression, cardiac compression device. That's gonna cost us $9,000. So, I'm getting older. I can't do compressions like I used to, so the mechanical ones are gonna do better than I can, so. Also, just to summarize, our membership drive will be coming out in late February, beginning of March. So, as you can see, some of the numbers we presented, the community support and supporting the membership drive and being part of that is definitely, you know, important to us and helps us provide service to the community. Thank you.
Andre, is that anything you can help them with from a public relations standpoint, like membership drives? All right, thank you.
Hey, so I just had a question for Dan. Is it okay if I ask?
Yeah.
Speaker on here. Hey, Dan, yeah, the question is, on that bill, so the average bill, let's say, is $1,100, and you get reimbursed $450. Are the insurance companies, for the most part, reimbursing only a third of that? Because I'm assuming it go through insurance. For most people, if they have health insurance, it goes to the carrier, and then, you know, there's usually, you know, 80% reimbursement of the cost.
It's a complicated mix.
Okay.
For Medicare has a contractual obligation that makes us write off a big chunk.
Okay.
Right now, we're dealing with private insurance companies that are paying what they wanna pay and not what we're billing. So, they've taken upon themselves to make their own fee schedule, which is complicated things for us.
Okay.
And we have patients who don't pay their bill, don't give us their insurance information so that we can bill. So, it's a lot of everything.
Okay. I was just curious, because, you know, obviously, you know, I have health care. If I go to the doctor and the bill's $443, you know, they get reimbursed a percentage of that, but it's not 35%. It's usually 80 to 90%. So, I was just surprised to see how low that is from the insurance companies if they're, the average reimbursement's that low.
Yeah, it's pretty bad.
It's a battle, okay. All right, just curious. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Item 7D, correspondence from the Charters Valley District Flood Control.
We included this in your agenda. They have an annual meeting coming up on March the 20th. This is also an agency that the township appoints a delegate to serve on. That's on our agenda for this evening as well. So, I just wanted to make sure that we shared that correspondence. It also has, you know, budget information. I think their financial statements are on there as well, so good amount of information if you were interested about what the organization does and who they serve.
Okay. I noticed the minutes from last meeting. I think, Pat, you were in attendance, right? Okay. Item eight, consent calendar items, approval of minutes. So, these are, these are minutes from last month's meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item eight B, payments of bills?
Just a couple of things to point out for you. The bills in their entirety are laid out for you guys, but just to highlight our top five bills this month, top four of them are all rock salt, right? So, a lot of, almost, almost $85,000 in rock salt. I know Vitale's gonna talk a little bit about that later. And then the other, the fifth was our MEIT, our health insurance premiums for $100,000 bucks this month. So, if you have any other questions about the bills, we'd be happy to answer them.
I do not. May I please have a motion from someone to pay the bills?
I'll make that motion.
No, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item eight C, financial reports.
In terms of financial reports, the revenue and expenditure report for the month of January has been provided to you guys. You know, this is the time of year we don't have a lot of revenue coming in, although, you know, it's good to see that in the month of January, we still were able to capture about $1 million in various taxes and revenue sources.
Is that trickled in from last year? Is that, where that come?
Yeah, about $111,000 shown up as real estate tax. We had some discussion about that today, whether that was 20, we're assuming it's 24 revenue. The reason we're not saying definitively it is, is we haven't gotten our tax collector's report to kind of tie that with where it is. But we're assuming that that's what the vast majority of that is. Also, good to see the EIT and the transfer taxes as high as it is. So, for the month, you know, we still operate out of deficit with expenditures closer to 1.5 million, but, you know, as we await that real estate tax to come in, just being negative half million on the month is not a bad thing.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion from someone to approve the financial reports?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bank account balances.
You know, not much to point out. These are really just included on our agenda for full transparency, but you can see the balances in their various accounts. Again, this is the time of year where we're awaiting our real estate tax, so the general fund's not as healthy as it will be, but those are the balances.
Okay. Thank you. May I please have a motion to approve the bank account balances?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Liaison reports, item nine, public safety. Had a discussion with our emergency management coordinator, a couple of things they're working on. He's working on some IT stuff with Joe Hollowood for a Teams page. That Teams page, he would then roll out to all of the fire departments in EMS, where they would have action plans and emergency plans, as well as our Township EMC. That way, everyone has access to them, you know, when they're in the field, they can use their MDTs and their rigs. The other thing he was working on is a hazard mitigation plan. So, the county has hired a third-party organization, and they'll work with that third party. I mentioned this maybe a couple of meetings ago, where we'll identify, when I say "we," the township will identify, you know, two hazards. It could be a building, it could be a weather, you know, incident, it could be a rail incident, something like that, where, you know, we'll end up having to have a mitigation plan for that. And he plans to have a virtual meeting probably later this month to kind of nail that down. And that's all I had from public safety. Public infrastructure and service, that's you, Becky, right?
Yes, I don't have anything to report this week.
Okay, thank you. Finance and Admin, Leanna's absence, intergovernmental relations, Tim?
Yeah, I was at the municipal authority meeting last Thursday. Really nothing to report from there. They have a, you know, a nice, smooth-running ship down there, and then it's just as far as, we're still efforting to get the meeting scheduled with the school board. And hopefully, I'm gonna be hearing back from them here shortly, but that's on the docket to get set up soon.
Ides of March.
Yep.
Community and Economic Development.
Yeah, I just have an update on Newbury Market. Things are moving forward with the Bass Pro Shop, which is the anchor tenant down there, so hope to be breaking ground soon with that, and then from there, there should be some more tenants coming in, so exciting times.
Okay, thank you. Item 10, older unfinished business. A, discuss and consider SP-05-2024, the Wimbley Club Preliminary and Final Land Development Application, Parcel 256K-20, Zoned PED.
I'll jump into that, Chuck, if I could. As you may recall.
Yep.
The board approved this plan at the November 13th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting. In the last several months, we have been coordinating with the consultant for the developer, and they'd informed us, they were anticipating some minor changes to the site plan, as well as a building reduction. So, we did get those plans approximately a week ago, and we did re-review that application. We provided a review letter dated today. The building changed in size from approximately a 57,404 square foot footprint down to a 34,417 square foot footprint, which is about a 40% reduction in size. Beyond that, they made a few minor adjustments to the alignment of Kensington Street, where it exits the site, and they did provide one additional access point from one of the parking lots to the drive-al. Aside from that, there were no ordinance-related items. They're not gonna need any additional modifications or variances for the project. I know the consultant is here tonight if he wanted to speak on that, but, you know, we issued the letter. There's a few minor cleanup items that are gonna be needed prior to the developers' agreement, but we're in support of the application moving forward.
We don't have to take action or anything, right?
We did put them on for reapproval.
Okay. Are you the consultant? Whoa, scary.
We are insured for that.
We are.
David Weber, KU Resources, do you need my address or whatever?
No.
Okay. I don't have too much to say, really. It's a smaller building, and we just were mostly cleaning it up. As far as I'm aware, the only thing, which I know I did something about, and I was looking for it, something regarding traffic.
That'll be required prior to the developers' agreement.
And you guys got one for Bass Pro, right?
We got it for Bass, but we needed, Bass didn't meet the warrants for the last signal installation as part of all of Newbury, but we need you to do the analysis on this site.
And that was the engineer from Florida? I'll figure it out.
It's part of this application.
Right, we had reached out, well, because they had just done it for Bass Pro.
Yes.
So, it's gonna be easy for them to update it. Right, right, I mean, it's right down the street. So, anyway, yeah, we had looked into it a couple of months ago. We'll get that figured out soon.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'm John, Eric, I'm the builder for David Barr. The only thing that is changing, because we shrunk it down, we don't have it anywhere near a three-story now. There used to be an offset in the building. Now, it's just a complete second story and a complete first story. So, it just said three-story gym, it's only a two-story.
Okay. There is an elevation view as part of the attachments. If you could bring that up, it'll show a look of what the, it was the second attachment, I believe.
I have one, too, if you guys need to see it, so.
Yes, I just have a question, too. Where's BJ's in? Because it's hard to, I get confused as to where this is.
There were two.
After you're done with that.
From a plan-view look, Mark, it would be top right.
So, top right is BJ's, okay. And then, what, the gas pumps are kind of in the middle there?
They would be on the right-hand side, yes.
Right-hand side, okay.
Yeah, so like when you come into the gas, the gas pumps, it's that plot of land that's up against the train track side.
Yep. Okay, the six markings there are the gas pumps, okay.
Yeah.
So, it's coming in behind the gas pumps. Gotcha, okay.
The building, the entrance for the building?
Yeah, is that right? Because it looks like there's a street, it's, there's a lot of stuff going on here.
Yeah, because of the traffic coming from BJ's, we didn't want people trying to cross the road to come in. So, you're just gonna come, like, if you come in front of the building there, you'll be able to exit to the right and go out.
Okay. It looks like someone just doodled all over this. Trying to follow the black line.
That was, that's the landscape plan, yeah. The landscape plan is a little.
Guys got a lot of bushes.
There you go.
That was a little bit better.
Yeah, so you see the club entrances all the way down there, what would be on the right of the building? And then right above that is the exit that we're gonna come out. That'll be a right turn only out into the, I can show you on the screen.
We believe you.
Yeah, so, and then, just to be aware, the whole downstairs would be the fitness facility, and then the upstairs would be all pickleball. So, and then it'll be, we'll just have a big grassy lot where the rest of the building was planned for, so.
Okay, what's on the left, is grass on the left?
Yeah, it's away from BJ's. So, the building's gonna sit close to BJ's, and then it'll be a grass lot to the left.
Is that for, you know, further development?
Yeah, future development. We're not sure what he wants to do there. We might offset the building, it might turn into some outdoor stuff that we would be, submit for approval for and do all that later. It's just gonna be grass, and the only thing, you know, in two years, you'll see a building that's sitting right there with a grass lot next to it, so.
JT, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought I read somewhere that the, like, the parking count didn't change from the first submittal?
Yeah, we just left it all the way it was. So, it's a smaller building with the same amount of parking for the bigger building.
Okay.
So, we didn't have to, we didn't wanna mess with any variances or change anything. We're, David is, like, we wanna put a shovel in the ground as soon as you guys give us a permit, so we're looking mid-March, hopefully, to start doing this, so. We're gonna, we should have full, you guys should have full drawings for us for permit approval the 28th of this month, so.
Great. And that, what, in terms of completion date, are we talking a year?
Yeah, I just, I was.
Just rough guess, I know it's never.
I would say a year and a half, you know, just in case. I'm hoping to be done in a year, but you know how this stuff goes, so.
Okay. Just curious.
Yeah, and we shouldn't, there should be zero impediment with BJ's or anybody down there, so we should be good to go, so.
Okay. Thanks, JT.
Yep.
Moving on, item 11, new business.
We do need a vote on that.
Have to vote on that? That's why I said we don't have to take action.
Yeah, we do, we.
Okay.
Just because of the size of the reduction in the building, we didn't want that to be something that was just administratively.
I got you. So, we're making a motion to approve preliminary and final land development application for Parcel 256K-20, PED, development of 4.16 acre lot in Newbury for a three-story gym and sports complex, including pickleball and tennis courts.
Don't make the motion.
Yeah, it says, I was just reading off the thing. I thought that when I read it, I'm like, I just heard two-story pickleball.
That was a cut and paste, that's what.
Do you need me to reread it? All right, do I have a motion to approve the development plan?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, new business. Discuss and consider ordinance 2025-1, amendments to Chapter 240 regarding the open space design.
So, this is what they, we started the meeting with as far as the hearing goes. You know, as solicitor pointed out, you have a 90-day period when you can take action. You can do it this evening if you'd like. So, if you'd like to go through any of the details of the ordinance, I'm happy to do that with you guys, but I'll kind of leave it up to you.
I mean, are you guys, I'm willing to take action. I mean, I've read this several times. Does anyone wanna make a motion to take action to approve ordinance 2025-1, open space design?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 11B, discuss and consider Resolution 2025-2, appointing representatives to the Charters Valley Flood District, Charters Valley District Flood Control Authority. Gotta shorten that name up a little bit.
Need an acronym, yeah, something more catchy. They're looking for a delegate and an alternate. In the past, it's been myself and Pat, largely because the meetings are during the day, but if it's something that, you know, a board member could be appointed to it, so I didn't wanna presume anything, which, however you wanna move forward with appointing a delegate and an alternate, be happy, two of us would be happy to do it again. If anyone wanted to jump in, they're certainly welcome to.
Yeah, I was gonna say, they're public meetings, anyone can attend.
Right.
Right, so I'm fine with keeping the same delegate and alternate, as long as you guys are, if anyone has any other. All right, does someone wanna make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-2, appointing John and Pat as the delegate and alternate to the Charters Valley District Flood Control Authority?
Say that five times.
Said it twice. Wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'd make that motion.
All right, second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 11C, discuss and consider a motion to approve awarding Shields Asphalt Paving Contract for the 2025 paving program.
We can let Jason get into some of the details, but just to maybe lay out for the board, the reason there's two agenda items this evening is the program was bid with a base bid and then.
Split, put through something else.
And add alternate that was for a new process that we're trying called rejuvenation. So, the second one, contract would be solely for that rejuvenation process, which we can describe when we get to it, and the first one is just for a traditional paving.
I think you mentioned that rejuvenation last meeting.
Yep. And I did also wanna note, John, that, you know, obviously, we're comfortable with the numbers. We provided a recommendation on it. We're aware that the township has a budget that you wanna stick to, and we're prepared to work within that budget. We do have contingencies in this number. Our recommendation is to award to the low bidder Shields, and obviously, we'll track this contract closely and make sure that it cuts off. We, under the contract, we do have the ability to reduce some of the contract to fit within your budget, and that is everyone's plan.
Okay. All right, does anyone wanna make a motion on resolution? I guess it's not resolutions, awarding the bid of Shields Asphalt Paving for the contract of the 2025 paving program.
I'll make the motion, Chuck.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Discuss and consider a motion to approve awarding Pavement Technology Incorporated a contract for the 2025 paving program.
Yeah, let's call that Part B or somehow, like, delineated.
Let's just call it the rejuvenation or something like that, or.
Sure.
Rejuvenation paving?
Same thing. We had one bidder on that, and we're comfortable with the unit numbers that they provided. We think they fit industry standard and how they bid other municipalities. We, same situation. I know Vitale's been in contact with the contractor. We do not intend to utilize that full budget amount that you'd be awarding here for the contract, but they would lock in for a much lower, you know, unit cost rate.
Did they bid on the last one?
They only bid on this one. We've only done this one. This is the first time.
Yeah, I know it was a.
No, they did not bid on the actual paving contract itself, just the rejuvenation.
Okay, interesting. Anyone like to please make a motion to approve awarding Pavement Technology Incorporated a contract for the 2025 rejuvenation paving program?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
I know. 11E, discuss and consider a motion to advertise the Washington Pike and Twin Ponds Lane Signal Update Project.
This is in our Capitol Program, we received. This is, uh, in our capital program, we received a Greenlight Go grant for this project, it's, uh, the grant's in the amount of $313,000. Uh, the project would, uh, replace the signal at, this is by the, um.
Shop and Eagle.
The old, the old shop and save, right, yeah, um, the Giant Eagle on Washington Pike, uh, be replacing that signal, pedestrian signals, uh, it would bring it into the, the automated, uh, camera, um, system that exists in that corridor, this is the only one in the corridor that's not on it.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to advertise the Washington Pike and Twin Ponds Lane Signal Update Project?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, discuss and consider a motion to approve advertising the pollution reduction plan and putting it on public display.
This is a requirement of our MS4 permit, that's, uh, it's actually, should say pollutant reduction, but, you know, it's more about water quality than air quality. Um, so for the township, this really means trying to get sediment out of the streams. Um, we worked with, uh, Jason's team, they, they led the process of using, you know, um, some GIS maps and, and some other, um, tools and resources to identify where in the, in the, um, uh, water system, we, we can introduce some, uh, some, basically the retrofitting of, of stormwater ponds to prevent sediment from getting into the streams. And I know there's a way to quantify all this stuff, so it's a lot more detailed than that. Um, part of the process, and then you can talk to the details, but the process requires us to, uh, produce a plan, put it on public display, um, advertise that it's here for a 30-day period, um, before we send it to the DEP for formal review and comment, uh, after which we would bring it back to the board for approval, so, um, right now we're, we're, we've done the report, we want to put it on display. Uh, we envision, um, before a meeting, you know, opening Lafayette Room and allowing, uh, people to see the plan, hear about the plan, we might get in touch with, uh, maybe some HOAs who, what, might have a project, um, identified within the plan, so they're aware of it, um, and keep you guys kind of informed of, of the process.
Thank you. Would anyone like to please make a motion to approve advertising the pollution reduction plan and putting it on display?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item G, discuss and consider a motion to promote Jason David from the Parks Division to the Streets Division of the Public Works Department.
This is filling the second of two voids left by retirements, um, Jason has a CDL, he's been a, an employee in the Parks Department.
Was a year, right?
He just completed his, uh, his six-month probationary period, so, um, he hasn't moved, been with us very long, but, um, he's proven himself to be very good, and, um, you know, we think he's gonna do well in this role.
Okay. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to promote Jason David from Parks to the Street Division of Public Works? I'll second. All in favor? Item H, discuss and consider tax refunds from Kevin Byber. These, I'm sure, there's only 11 of them, I think these are all these CLR reductions? There's only one that was pretty significant.
Yeah, I don't have much else to add.
Say the math don't lie, right? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve tax refunds from Kevin Byber to these 11 properties? Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item I, discussion of the draft facility use policy.
Yeah, we have a, um, a policy in front of you guys tonight, or at least an intake form that we've used, um, you know, I think since we've been in this space, we've shared with you what we've been doing in terms of letting other people use a space, trying to do more to get more people in the space. Um, so just felt like, uh, the timing was good to put a formal policy together. Um, Paula took the lead on this and worked with some other staff to come up to get it to this point. Um, and, you know, if you don't, you want to go over some of the, the details of it, um, we're not asking you guys to approve this this evening. Um, we just wanted to share with you what, like, kind of what we're doing. Um, we are actively enforcing this right now with the idea of, um, you know, we can modify it as we see fit. Really what we're trying to do is, like, um, limit liability for the building, both in terms of, like, when we open doors, and in terms of, like, what types of activities we permit and allow in the space. Um, and, you know, to this point, Paula's done a great job of, like, getting it onto a more formal system. Um, Joe Holloward's played a really key role in how we program doors, um, but I don't want to steal too much thunder, so you want to give him a quick overview?
Yeah, I'll just highlight kind of some of the main things, um, is, um, kind of limiting the organizations, um, and nonprofits to, uh, once a month and, um, only able to reserve like 90 days out, and the reason for that is to, um, you know, place priority on township-funded, um, activities, meetings, things like that, um, our schedule's sometimes not set for, you know, summer programs or summer meetings aren't scheduled yet, so we don't want the room taken before we need to get in there and schedule anything. Um, this is also pertaining to the senior center, um, just laying out access, um, one thing you see is actually taking a deposit. Um, I feel strongly about deposits, just holds accountability to the organization and respect to the, the facilities, um.
You don't have to take a deposit for every rental, right? So it's like, I'm just making this up, if baseball said I want it every other month, you'll take a hundred bucks.
For the year.
Hold it for the year and give it back to us.
Correct, correct. Um, so right now, um, you know, there's implementing no fees necessarily for, um, the usage, um, that's obviously up to you guys. Um, so those are kind of the main things, like, once a month and, um, no more than 90 days in advance are kind of the big, the big, kind of.
No, I, I read it over, I thought it was very good, you know, I had the rules and the regulations, I think were, they were good.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Our thoughts were, if, if you're comfortable with it, um, you know, to give it a little bit of teeth, bring it back to you in resolution form, um, that you could, you could adopt it, so we have a, a formal, you know, use policy that we can share with folks.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to formalize it.
Yeah.
So we don't need to act on that today, do we have to make a motion to?
No, we would, we would strive to bring this to you next month if we can get that together and, you know, work with you through email between then and then on, on looking at, at drafts and whatnot.
Okay, thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Item 12, department reports, manager's report, Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, um, he has submitted, um, my report in writing to the board, um, we went over a lot of these items on the agenda. Um, I'll highlight maybe a couple of things that we didn't get to. First, just, uh, making everyone aware that, um, attended a, uh, meeting sponsored by Pendot, related to improvements at Washington Pike and Alpine, as well as Boyce. Sorry, excuse me. All right, we'll get it there. Anyways, this, this project is, um, Pendot got some grant money for it, the, they would be widening Washington Pike by, um, installing turning lanes as well as signalizing those intersections. Um, this would be both at Alpine and at, at Boyce Road, so, um, they displayed this to the public, I think they're rounding up or getting close to, uh, completing their right-of-way acquisition process. They're looking to have this out to, uh, to bid in 2026, and, um, for the work to, to be constructed in 2027. So that intersection has long been problematic for us, you know, it's pretty unsafe, so hopefully this, it does, goes a long way towards improving safety down there. Kind of sticking with safety, something that's not on here, um, we had talked at length about the need for a, a guide rail to be installed, uh, below the, the apartments on, um, on Oak Ridge Road there.
Yeah, so it's done.
That has been installed, so that's, that's good news to report. Yeah. Lastly, I wanted to mention that we've been, um, working to, to convene the Active Transportation Plan Committee, looking at focusing on some implementation projects, uh, you know, that study identified a listing of projects to, to pursue. Um, I think the, the board suggested that we, you know, kind of tasked them with keeping things, uh, rolling. So, uh, did schedule an initial meeting and have some ideas for some first projects that we'll share. If anyone has any questions on anything else, I'd be happy to take them.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant managers' report.
Thank you, commissioners. I submitted my report in writing, just a few things I wanted to highlight this evening. There's obviously a lot of issues with tax collection I've been dealing with, it's an ongoing issue with residents, um, having concerns about, um, tax refunds, taxes not being received in a timely fashion. Um, I'm helping as much as possible and been trying to coordinate with our tax collector as much as possible to help the residents, but it's an ongoing issue that the board needs to be aware about at this point in time, so it continues. Um, oh, the other thing I wanted to touch upon is obviously there's been a, for waste management in Hunting Ridge, there's been a lot of communication about what we can do to improve for the townhomes, the 246 townhomes at Hunting Ridge, how we improve trash collection, um, with waste management. There was a new program rolled out for those 246 townhomes. Last week I got some preliminary numbers from Waste Management, this week I'll have better numbers from Waste Management, basically what the change actually meant to us and what the change meant to, uh, Hunting Ridge. So I'll be able to present next month some hard numbers, but like I said, I have some soft numbers at this point, but I don't think they're accurate. I mean, I, I just have a hard time believing it, so like I said, I'll have better numbers this week. They're gonna track them for me for a few weeks.
I saw that they sent out a survey to their residents, but it was relatively low response.
Correct, that's why I asked Waste Management, Waste Management's very good at tracking things, I've learned through a number of different things, they have cameras actually on all the trucks.
Okay.
So I, I can get firsthand information from them rather than rely on a third party. If I can get it through Waste Management and basically tell me what they think their, this impact means.
It's dealing facts, right, not speculation.
Exactly. And the last thing I just wanted to touch upon, that this, a list comes out every year of the tax-exempt property, obviously across Allegheny County, and I decided it'd be a good exercise to cut through it for South Fayette this year, so I went through all of our tax-exempt properties to make sure they were all accurate, to make sure they were on the tax rolls, because a lot of times, obviously, you have tax-exempt properties that should be on the tax rolls that aren't on the tax rolls. And every one of them that I went through, there was about a list of about 65 of them, they're all accurate and they're, they should be, I mean, they're not taxable at this point in time.
Yeah.
Is the best way to put it, so.
Okay.
So, any questions?
Nope. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Pat.
12C, building permits report?
Um, the reports are, are there for you guys to review, not a ton of activity from.
One month.
Uh, for the month. Uh, we did have a number of new home starts, um, you know, mostly in, in charter. And then the commercial stuff would just be like fire alarms, um, on the, on the apartment development, so, um, not, not a lot going on.
And just, uh, refresh my memory, we talked about looking at, uh, that fee schedule, do we make any progress on that? Or we have a meeting to do that?
Uh, we, the, we presented the board with a revised fee schedule that you approved in January, is that what you mean?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's in now?
Yeah, we did approve that, correct, it should be reflected in the minutes that you passed.
Okay. Item 12D, communications and community development?
Hello, Andrea Egler, Director of Communications and Community Development. On Monday and Tuesday, our, um, winter magazine was mailed and delivered, um, this was the first magazine with our new printer and under our, um, 20% cost savings plan for the year, um, I'm pleased with the product, uh, the quality, um, turned out very nice, um, and we were able to have our, um, magazine with the same, you know, great content and quality and everything that we're used to. The printer did a great job, I'm satisfied with that, with that new vendor, so, um, everything went very smoothly. For, um, meeting recordings, um, we, uh, did post the first planning commission meeting, so now we have, uh, commissioners and planning commission on YouTube, and Parks and Recreation Board conducted a practice recording, so, uh, they'll be next in line. And I'm working with the IT director, and, um, he's working with our, um, the outside IT consultant to make a couple, um, smaller improvements in here just with some of the way that we have the equipment set up and so forth, just to, um, streamline what we're doing with the recordings and the audio and so forth. For the TV channel that we plan on getting up and running, um, this week, the IT director and I, um, are placing an order for, uh, the main piece of equipment that we need, the scheduling hardware, which also has the software component. So, um, we don't have an estimated delivery or installation date yet, but what's, what'll happen is, um, that'll be delivered, um, and installed. Then I will have, um, software training, then I'll have to set everything up through the software, and then we'll be able to launch. So I'm hoping to be able to do that, um, in the spring before we get into the summer season, um, at this point, that seems like a reasonable timeline.
Right.
And I would be happy to answer questions on anything else you might have.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Thanks, Andrea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Engineers' report?
Good evening again, commissioners, uh, I'd like to go over a couple of the highlighted items I have for, uh, tonight's report. Uh, number five on our list, the Mohawk Road realignment, uh, that was, um, that contractor was rewarded several months ago. Uh, we've been working with the contractor on his submittals, uh, notice to proceed is issued for March 1st, so that should be, uh, starting here in the next few weeks, uh, as far as that project goes. And as part of this year's paving program, that will be the paving for that project, so once that project is done, it'll be done this season as well. Uh, I wanted to update you on the Chrome Federal Credit Union project, this plan, um, is at the corner of Millers Run Road and Route 50. It was approved about three years ago, uh, by the previous board, um, and, you know, obviously that approval's good for five years. They've already executed developers' agreements and posted bonds and whatnot, but they've, uh, communicated to, uh, staff recently that, uh, they plan to get moving on that one, so wanted to bring that to your attention. Uh, Mayview Road Townhomes, we've been working with the solicitor and his staff on developers' agreements for that, so that should be happening soon. I know they want to break ground in April if possible. Uh, Bass Pro Shops, we've been working with solicitor and township staff on developers' agreements with that. Um, Wembley, obviously, uh, we've been working on the, uh, the updated plans for that, and, uh, we've been busy with the paving program, uh, in recent weeks here. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Big list.
I'm good.
You're good.
Thank you.
12F, Parks and Rec.
Good evening, um, one thing I just want to take a few seconds to go over, uh, Mark, last time, last month you asked about the trails to Fairview, so I actually put the map on the, um, report, so you can kind of see, kind of the concept of the trails. So you can hear, you see the, um, the larger red path, which is along the road, um, that is with funding through the Southwest Pennsylvania Commission. So that will be, um, a multimodal trail at the grade of the road, all the way from kind of the restrooms by the Lafayette Pavilion, then all the way up to the splash pad, and then, um, part of the ballfield projects is connecting, um, um, from there. And then you can kind of see, um, the other little red trail would be kind of an accessible trail that kind of goes up to the top of the hill in Fairview. And then all those dotted lines are more of your, like, nature trails, um, with like a natural path. And then you see it connects down to where OTB is, um, and then there'll also be another paved path from where the new ballfields is down to like Mayview Road. Um, so in total, I think it has five connections from outside the park, so it's really connecting, um, to community, the neighborhoods around the park, um, as well as finally kind of have that safety element of having a trail along the path.
There are all the white stars, so you have Furwood, Lakemont.
All the connections.
OTB.
Yep.
Hastings.
Yep, so, uh, Gibson Thomas was actually out there today doing some surveys, and, so this is like your basic plan that they're gonna design it out kind of more based on like the topograph, so it might be off a little bit, but this is the main concept of what we're shooting for. So in total, it will be, um, over five miles of trails of different services and, um, kind of like challenging, some challenging ones, some easy ones. Um, and in total, we got $1.2 million for this project.
Your, uh, legend got cut off on your, when you cut and paste, what are those little yellow dashes that are?
So that is, there is gonna be, um, to make trails, uh, as accessible as possible, you put signs at any, any space where a trail branches off and explains, it will have signage of what the grade is, what the material is, so it just, it, um.
Someone's getting it over their head.
Correct.
Yeah, I got you, okay.
It's more for your access for all, so people know if they're, um, physically able to complete the trail. So as part of creating access for all through trails, you put signage at your splits.
Thank you.
Yep. As for, um, um, so the ballfields in Fairview Park, we're still waiting for, um, our NPDS permit, hopefully we have some news on that soon. Um, kind of keep you updated, we finally heard back from West Penn Power about getting power up from Mayview Road to, um. We finally heard back from West Penn Power about getting power up from Mayview Road to light the ball fields and kind of gave us a cost estimate for that, so we needed that information because we're going to be running the conduit this year with the ball fields and then I, budgeting for lighting the fields next year. Been working on getting all the details organized for the concession stand and park attendant in Fairview at the splash pad. Been working on a few grants. One, we're going to, I'm applying through AARP to potentially put some equipment rental lockers at the, all our courts with pickleball equipment, as well as put a bocce court in, which was an idea from our lovely gentleman from down in Hastings. So hopefully, we can get some funding to get that built. That's kind of all I have. I did submit an annual report, I just have a few things to highlight from 2024. As we all know, we opened the splash pad, which was a huge success, and looking forward to opening that back up. With having that new pavilion, we were able to increase our pavilion rentals by 16%. I have a feeling that's going to be a lot more popular this year also. We, every year, we submit a participant survey, just to get a feel on how well we're doing with our programs and events. Very good results for our township events. Some, some of negative comments was mainly for Joy Through Fairview, so we know what we went wrong there, and we'll try to make those changes for this year, so kind of affected some of our survey results, but. We brought in over $80,000 within partnership with our sponsor initiative in the magazine, so that is a 16% increase from 2023. One of the questions we asked is one, a weighted average of one to 100, 72%, so they're more likely to support a local business that sponsored our event and seeing it in the programs and in the magazine. This year was the first year we took summer camp up to the splash pad, and they absolutely loved it, so we're making a few changes to camp this year, that we're going to have it more at Fairview Park, just because the kids love the splash pad and they're able to, you know, cool off. Our overall program satisfaction was a 3.9 on a five-point scale. Pretty, overall, very satisfied with our programs, kind of the one area that was more, you know, neutral or unsatisfied was the lack of indoor facilities. People are wanting to see more one-day programs rather than like week-long sessions, so Ian's already kind of making those changes, and we're having, coming up like a tea time with princesses, we got some Valentine's Day programs, so we're trying to offer us more of those one-day programs. Some of the comments where we can improve is, like I said, they want more one-day programs, anything free, just kind of the lack of indoor facilities and the type of programs that are offered. So there's some of those areas we can, I know, kind of make some changes and try to provide better programs and events for the community. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I just had a quick one, Paul.
Yeah, sure.
So I noticed that they, they removed the speed bumps at Fairview.
Yes.
Is that permanent or?
No, that was for just plowing, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah. Right, Vitaly?
Just replying, okay.
And I know there were some concerns of cars driving around them, but when we put the, when those ball fields go in, the trail and the fields are going to be kind of right up against the road, so it's now going to, like, they won't have an option to drive around the speed bump. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Police report.
Good evening. I don't really have anything new this week or this month. I did reach out to the Civil Service Commission to extend our current officer eligibility. This is just basically a formality now, where it'll be good through next February. The Citizens Police Academy is now closed off, the registration ended on Monday. We have 20 residents that are going to attend, so we're really excited about that.
Oh, you added three.
And I'd like to extend an invitation to the board if you would like to pop in at some point, no charge.
No charge.
I'll give you the schedule to see what would be interested.
Be willing to be cuffed, right? It's going to be like.
Shoot at you.
Yeah.
Tased.
No, but if any of you want to stop in, there'll be refreshments and things, and we start a month from yesterday, so the 11th of March will be our first.
And that's in the evening, right?
Yeah, at 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And there's, like I said, we had, my report reflects 17, but then we had three signups over the weekend.
That's awesome.
So we have 20, so we're happy with that for the first year, so. Any questions on that?
I don't.
I can get you a schedule for what we're going to be, the programs we'll be providing for that.
Yeah, if you could email that, that'd be great, because if I, I have to look at my work schedule, if I can't make it on the 11th, I'll come the next week or whatever.
Yeah, well, the 11th will be an introduction session to work on a thing, so.
Yeah.
We'll get into meat and potatoes the week after, so.
Awesome.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks to you.
Public Works report.
Good evening, commissioners. I would like to introduce a public works month report for January 25. Andrea, page 12, please. I did include it, refresh a template of my month report, and we can go over that briefly. So on page 12, you can see the work breakdown. As the largest numbers you can see for snow removal for a month of January, regular, regular snow removal time is almost 1,400 hours.
Yeah.
And almost 800 hours just in overtime, but it's been budgeted for. Pie chart, and then you, on the page number 15, so you will see how much we're costing a township in the material. So we used 3,222 tons of salt, and it cost us almost $300,000 in, in the material.
If you had any problems getting salt, I'd.
No, we're not. We placed an order for 2,500, we've received 2,000 so far.
That's good.
Our annual, our annual usage, typical usage, it's 5,000 tons, and we can, we can go over by 40%, so it's a 7,000.
Yeah, that's good. I, I saw some stuff on the news about communities having trouble getting salt, but I didn't, I didn't think that applied to anyone in, in the South Hills. That's good.
If we can continue, paving program summary, page 21, so you guys can see overall our paving program, it's highlighted by year, so we are on year number four. On the page 22, these are the roads we're planning to, to pave. Also, I would like to, page number 28, that's one of the newest, you can see the fleet expenses, how much we are spending on, on the fleet. And also page number 33, 34, and 35. It, it took us almost two years to get all the, to collect the data, input the data into our software, and now we are generating actual report and the conditions for each vehicle. So now you can see majority of our vehicles are in a kind of, in a red, in a, in a red zone that you.
Yeah, so what's the red zone means?
The red zone means needs replaced. The higher the number, the worse.
Right, as you can see that the rating, there's a, there's a rating, it usually, you can set up that rating, let's say 21 or 25, at the time to, to replace it. And the system analyzed the age, fuel consumption, work orders against that asset, man hours spent on mileage or hours. So it's an unbiased opinion, it's just a software-generated data. Some of the highlights, page number 39, snow, snow management, you guys already went through second road storm, storm sewer improvement. We are installing about 500 or 400 linear feet of storm sewer pipe to, to capture in the convey, to capture, to open, to open discharge to a road from Oak Ridge Road, and we're going to convey into, into, there's a.
Little crack at the bottom?
A little crack at the bottom, right.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's officially in January of 2025, Corey Loffer became, became a, received a promotion, so he'd been a full-time employee for a park, I mean, from a park to a, to a street division. And then just quick updates on the 2025 paving program, five bits were received, analyzed, and Jason already mentioned. In the February monthly priorities, you guys can, can see, can, can go through. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to, to answer.
Thanks, Vitaly.
Thanks, Vitaly.
I'm good.
Thank you. Anything relevant on the request tracker? I saw garbage, 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 garbage.
Yeah, a lot of trash, you know, we did have, their scheduling was thrown off with some weather-related stuff in January, that might have influenced it a little bit.
Sometimes people put things in there, they didn't.
I understand.
Put their garbage out in time, I'm sorry. So they're not all real.
I know, I drive around like I ain't picking that up.
But people put them in there.
Yeah.
Right, now, outside of those, pretty standard stuff.
Okay. We can go on to item 13, solicitors' report?
Nothing for public session.
At this point, is there any public comment?
Come on.
So far, I don't know.
And I have six copies of this little list. This is money that South Fayette Township is owed, this is money that Allegheny County Sheriff's Office and the sheriff.
Before, or after you pass up, before you go too far, can you just say, go to the podium? So that way everyone can hear you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
I wanted to try to be bossy, I just didn't want you to have to repeat yourself.
All right. I'm a taxpayer, not a resident. The tax payment is real estate tax.
Do we have your name?
Kate Luxembourg, Kate Luxembourg.
Her phone number and emails at the bottom.
Yes, and I work, I work for the company that purchased at tax sale and then rehabbed and sold 629 Deer Watch, recently sold. At the closing, we had to pay real estate tax before, I think it was year 2024, but the real estate tax is sitting there. It was a tax claim made to the sheriff through the regular process for a sheriff's sale, but for some reason, South Fayette Township doesn't go get this money after the sales. There's the list there of 10 or 11 similarly, similar situations to our situation. Ours was 600 and some dollars that we had to pay because the sheriff did not disburse this to South Fayette Township. So if you would get your money, we would get a refund.
So Mrs. or Ms. Luxembourg, the first column, I guess that's the lot number?
Um.
Whether it's like MG190.
That's the do, case number, the docket number, the docket number. And so the particular, the property I'm particularly concerned with is the second one from the end and the lot and block number.
And that one was Deer Watch in Hunting Ridge, right?
Yes. Now, I've spent, I, I've made many, many calls to Mr. Bieber, and he talked to me, I, I'm a troubleshooter for, I mean, as you can imagine, when properties go to tax sale, there's a lot of messy, loose ends. And I've really struggled to try to get this to work, and it hasn't worked, and now Mr. Bieber's not returning my phone calls. And I've left a couple of voicemail messages, I think, in the township as well, but I find it easier to come learn something about a community I've never been to South Fayette before.
Welcome.
Not to the, not to the municipal building. I've been to the houses, I've been to Deer Watch when we purchased it. So please look at that list, it's easy to find, you go to the sheriff's part of the website, the sheriff's website, and there's that list right there. South Fayette is owed like 10, 10.
15 grand.
Okay, there you go. If you would do that, eventually, that money will make its, our 600.
Your 600 bucks.
Will come back to us.
And Vitaly can buy some salt.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Anything for board discussion?
Yep, we're good.
Can I please have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.